All in order, the Township Board of Trustees meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. First day of school today. Oops. Plus 90 degrees. And just warn everybody to pay attention to the school buses. If they're flashing red lights, please stop. Okay. Roll call, please.
Karen Straffan?
Here.
Tom Feder?
Here.
Tom Kruger?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Here.
John Horvath?
Here.
Joanne Shurkey?
Here.
Okay, before we get going, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda and add, new business 15. Elevate Officer Shane to full-time. I received an email today. I put it on everyone's, in front of everybody about it, and we'll talk about it later. But that's my motion.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. All in favor of the amendment of the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose as motion carries? So that's 15. Bill's payable, entertain a motion.
We motion to approve the bill's payable in the amount of $84,924.51.
Support? Okay, a motion, all kinds of support. Any discussion?
Oh, I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm not, um, on the, uh, first page. Michigan comm. number 1051, $33 a month.
I'm Cheryl.
Okay.
And actually, I think we just called them to do that semi-annual.
Okay.
Yep, so that's paying it through June.
Okay. And then the equipment management, network connections, Clay 27. Refresh my memory if we did.
That's our IT guys.
Okay.
That's our maintenance.
Fire department, 206-744. Tools and supplies, Sunset Harbor, 112 gallons of gas.
Yeah, it was a field for St. Clair. When you guys went to St. Clair. Power plant.
Okay. Okay. That's all.
Any more discussion?
Just curious.
Bearing none, roll call vote, please.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, any public comments, anything relating, any business on the agenda? Public comments relating to any business on the agenda? Seeing none, move right along to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of August 15, 2016, and a synopsis thereof, various reports, the check reports, the building and zoning, fire and water department, July reports, a notice on road watch, communications, a letter of an intent to retire from Patty Watson, and a request, please hire two part-time dispatchers, Jennifer Lumpkin and Susan Westrick.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, is everyone good with the consent agenda?
I would like to have Chief Coach read the letters that talk about those two part-time dispatchers, just so the people know their qualifications and so forth. Do you mind doing that? I have them.
Sure. Well, I could probably talk about them without it.
You know, because they're highly qualified.
Absolutely.
For public information.
Sure. Well, Sue Westrick, she's been a dispatcher for many years. She ended up just pretty much retiring out of Richmond Police Department as a dispatcher. She does currently work for the St. Clair County Marine Division, where she also works as a reserve officer. She has expressed her interest with us to come over and work with us as a reserve and with, as a part-time dispatcher. And as we know, it's not easy to come across experienced dispatchers, and especially ones that want to work on a part-time basis, which, right now, we don't have any. So trying to fill any gaps in scheduling and that is pretty difficult. So that's what we're trying to do right now. Like I say, your qualifications, many years of doing this, along with the other qualifications that come along with it, I think should be invaluable resource to us. As far as Jennifer Lumpkin, she, Jennifer worked for us probably about, I think it was probably about eight years ago. She was a dispatcher for us, worked probably about three years with us, moved on to something else, actually moved out of state. Was out of state for a few years. That didn't seem to quite work out. She has since moved back. She's been back in the area for quite some time. I've known her for a long time. Her ma works for the city of Elginak, so I kind of got to know Jenny through there. Her ma still works over there. And she is a qualified dispatcher. She did a great job when she did dispatch for us and was a great employee. So that's why I kind of opened it up to her coming back when she made the request. I think she'd be excellent as a part-time dispatcher and fill in some of these schedule anomalies for us.
Thank you very much.
And this will cut down our overtime that we're paying for our dispatchers.
I just think it's good to know that people know the quality of the personnel that we hire.
Mike, I also thank you for signing the letters. I caught it.
I have a comment. I'd like to bring up something on the board meeting of August 15. I watched the board meeting, too. I was absent at that meeting. I sent Artie a message the day before at 10:37 a.m. to indicate that we had a funeral at Great Lakes National Cemetery at 4 o'clock, and unfortunately, coming back I-75, there was no way in the construction traffic, and I indicated. But in the thing, when they called my name, not only did nobody answer, nobody said boo, and I was not excused. And, um...
I'd like to make the record show that excusing Karen Straffan, the last meeting.
With that said, I just want to say that on October 3, we will be at an Army Conference in Washington, D.C., so that there is no thing on me not being here.
Okay.
October 3, Karen?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? Bearing nothing. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, supervisors report. After tons of emails and communications and a little bit arguing back and forth, our old insurance company is actually processing, I was hoping to get it today or in the mail, but it didn't happen. Our old insurance company is processing a check to Clay Township for the amount of $80,291.27 for our loss to embezzlement for Lisa White, the old clerk. And the, as you may remember, she did pay $70,000 in restitution when she pled guilty. When we showed exactly how much it cost us, I say us, the township, as far as added costs, I mean, she took $131,000, but there was added costs for work comp, you know, pension, you know, there's a whole plethora of stuff. She still owed outstanding $104,000. And so this brings up the total, once we get it, she will still owe us $24,000 in restitution. Talked to the probation officer. She is paying restitution right now, but not that much, and I'm talking to them to get them to step it up. We will have the first claim of this next $24,000 in restitution before the insurance company does. So we're $24,000 of becoming whole, and so we're getting pretty close. But I'm staying on that, and like I say, they, at first, they didn't want to include all these other secondary costs and wait a second, argued and everything, and they saw the light. And like I say, they are processing this check for us, so we should have it soon.
We're, not to interrupt you, Eric, but we're still going to be out audit fees and stuff like that.
The audit fees is on that $104,000.
I thought some of them weren't covered.
Well, they won't be covered under the insurance, but they're covered under the restitution.
Okay.
Got it? So that's the $24,000, basically.
Okay.
It's the cost of the audits that's still owed to us for restitution. Yeah, the insurance was going to pay for the cost of the audits.
Right.
So reconstruction has started on Bayview Shores Bridge, and we did receive a change of scope from the contractor. The water main is in a different location than the originally, the plan showed it. And negotiated with the county, we're going to split the costs. I haven't received the exact cost of the overage, what it's going to be, but if you remember, that job did come in $40,000 under budget. So I, we do have some room to go. Haven't received the costs. Basically, they got to put in a little bit more seawall, is that right, John? Probably, I don't know, eight sheets more, and so it shouldn't be too terribly a lot, but I just want to let the board know that we do have a change of scope on that Bayview Shores Bridge project. Cottage Lane Road, it ditching was done last week, and they're actually doing today the culverts in the ditch on Elm Street at South Channel Drive. Last week, Monday, was a day that we, nobody should have came to work that day.
When was Monday before?
Oh, Monday before.
And last Monday.
Yeah, and last Monday. We had some accidents, and thank God, everyone was okay. The first one, the water department was installing a service out on Swartout Road, and they had all the cones and the signs, you know, the men at work signs, warning signs out, as they should have. And I guess there was some light in someone's eyes, they couldn't see it, and it was an F-350, it was a big truck. They plowed through the cones, and they actually hit the front bucket of the backhoe. And they were going so fast that the truck rolled and went on top of a fire hydrant. Well, one of our guys was on the, on the backhoe at the time. That did a 180 and almost rolled, and thank God, nobody was hurt. If it, if they came 20 seconds earlier, we might have had some guys in the way of that vehicle, and it could have been, you know, very, it could, it could have been horrific. And I was talking to John at the water department. We're going to start, place a truck, when we're working on a road like that, place a pickup truck in between, you know, the oncoming traffic, and we were working with a flashing light, so they'll hit the truck instead of our guys. That was accident one that day. Accident two that day, water department, the other crew was going down the tight road in the cube van, and there was a driver that was driving erratically, I guess you would call it, and they were in the wrong lane, going towards our guys in the water, in the water department. And they were so far off the side of the road that their driver's side tires were on the, the rough tread on the shoulder, their passenger tires were probably almost in the water. And they still got clipped, just the mirror, but, and a little bit on the side, not any real big damage, but that could have been also horrific. Then, that day, same day, we had a car that turned into our police car. It was going 50 miles an hour. And the cars totaled. The officer had a concussion, sore, and still, you know, the airbags went off and saved him, and still not back to work 100%. But that also could have been horrific. So that, that all happened in three days, or three accidents in the one day, plus the same day, someone hit the county on Cottage Lane, working on the ditch. And I think AT&amp;T had an accident, too. I mean, it's crazy, so. But we still have to get our backhoe checked out as far as damage. There's going to be, I know the bucket's damaged, there's probably going to be some things that are bent on it. We got to get that to AIS, file insurance claim. We're already doing the insurance claim on the car, the police car, and just, you know, thank God, nobody was hurt, so. Moving right ahead, our assessing department passed our AMAR audit with a score of 92 out of 100, and part, no matter what, unless you get 100%, you have to file a corrective action plan with AMAR, which I did and signed and got that going. We have our no-wake, our no-wake signs are done. I have 10 four-by-four, four foot by four foot, and we have 30 small signs for canals. I have some people that express interest already, that, you know, they want them displayed on the end of their docks and everything, and I'm working out some kind of ways to get it, get it to them. Either I can drop it off at their house, some of these people are on out islands. I'm trying to work out a way where there's some, they can pick it up somewhere, maybe at the ferry on the island or something like that, so. But they're done. They actually came in about $300 under budget, and they look nice, and we're going to get those out. The Macomb and Marine City drains, there's going to be work being done on that for the county, the county drain commissioner, and basically said they're going to be cleaned out. Our assessments for the township, we get assessment, our assessment at large is called, it's 5371 for the Macomb drain, and, oh, I'm sorry, for the Marine City drain, and the Macomb drain is 3760, and that'll be going for 10 years. So basically, our new assessment for this next year for our drains will be $11,323. I did field quite a few questions on this. I kind of disagreed, along with some other people, that, especially on the Marine City drain, and people were pulled out of the drain district, and other people that were further away were added into it. There was one gentleman, actually, I talked to the engineer at the county drain, and I, I didn't get him pulled out, but I got his assessment reduced, because it just didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, and I went to bat for him on his behalf. Let's see. You know that we're, we signed up for the Michigan Insurance withholding program for, if there's a house damage, for like a fire, for instance, that they will, and they have homeowners insurance, they are required to withhold a certain amount of money from the owners to make sure that either the house is made safe again, or tore down, or, 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 you know, built back to the way it was. And we did receive one. I think it was from a house on Falkirk Road, and actually, this is, I think, the first one since we got onto that program, and I just want to let the board know, so we do have this amount available to us if they don't make this, I don't think that this house is a tear down if they don't make, you know, they got to make it safe or livable again. And if not, we can use that money to do that or, or remove the structure, that's how it works. It's a good program, because a lot of places, a house will get burned, will burn, they'll take the insurance money and they'll walk away from it, and it goes back to the township on taxes. And then we're stuck with dilapidated building that we have to, to tear down. So I do think it's a good program. Okay, I did receive four good applications for the planning commission. Hopefully, I have to set up interviews. I'll be appointing one for your approval at the next meeting. That's my goal. And depending on how the election goes, we will be appointing another one in November. But as you know, it's supervisor's duty to appoint and the board's duty to approve. So I'm hoping to have something before you on the next meeting as far as that. Have a lot of dangerous buildings on the books to be taken down. I'm actually in the process of seeking quotes for the demo on these properties and get the ball rolling on them. A lot of them are boathouses, and it's easier to do that kind of work in winter work, and that's really the reason I kind of waited till now to get them out for bid. We're starting to organize, I mentioned this last time, a fall event in the park. It's in the rough plane right now, it's going to be a scarecrow contest. We're working with the schools with their trick-oried trunk. We're talking about parade, pet parade, and that sort of thing. There'll be more, some information on that soon. Since we announced that, you know, we are going to be expanding the rec program, we've had many volunteers contacting us to do programs for us in conjunction with this. I've had someone wants to do a painting class, a couple people for dance classes. I think we had four or five people that contact us that are excited and want to help, and it's revenue neutral for us. In fact, some of them, we actually put a little bit of money back into our budget, like the photo shoot we have, the Christmas photo shoot is 25 bucks to get a family portrait of pictures, and the photographer gets 20, and he kicks $5 back to the park, so. We're excited about this and, and get it, get it back going. We're in the process of looking at all our assets that are available to us and utilizing, like Brown's, Brown's Field on the island, Elginak schools if we need to. And these programs are going to be offered anybody in the community, you know, we don't care if they live in Elginak, Ira, or wherever. And we're excited about it. Had a meeting with, that we kind of fostered with the U.S. Tennis Association about grant opportunities resurfing the tennis courts in Brown's Field on the island, which needs it very badly. They are a 501(c)(3) now, they just obtained that, and they, they have rough estimates about, costing about $25,000 for a total resurface of the, of their tennis courts. And we have an option of hopefully getting them $10,000 to the U.S. Tennis Association. They have $8,000 already, already available for them that they, that they did earn, and I know they're going to be talking to the community foundation up in Port Huron and some other things. So hopefully, they'll get those tennis courts resurfaced, and then we could help them utilize it. Farmers Market, every Wednesday, noon to 5, the Clay Township Park. I'd like to mention also the Elginak Cub Scouts. They're having a kickoff Friday, September 9, at the VFW, 6 p.m. Grades 1 through 6 are invited, and that's, again, at the VFW at 6 p.m. Friday, the 9th. September 21, right here in Clay Township, we're doing, this is through the Attorney General's Office, our consumer education lecture series. September 29, we have online safety here, and October 19, home repair and improvement scams. We've got three or four more of those set up also. Uh, let's see. January 18, oh, no, I'm sorry. September 26, Cooking for Crowds. It's a volunteer's guide to safe food handling. There is a $10 cost to that, but it also includes 115-page course manual. This is for anybody who is cooking meals for charities or anything, for safe food handling. And then I mentioned again, we're doing a photo shoot for families' Christmas pictures, $25, Saturday, December 3 and December 4, here at the Township Hall. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Two things?
Two, two things?
Yeah. Cottage Lane's ditch, I'd just like it to be noted that it is on my farm.
Part of it is, yes.
No, the back part, Artie, going down middle channel is about half on mine.
Okay.
But I just want that noted.
Okay.
And the second thing over here, I just, now, maybe my mathematics is wrong, but you said Macomb and Marine City Drain?
Yep.
53 and 37?
Right, we have other assessments.
Okay, but it doesn't say that.
Well, it says the total assessment is $11,000.
Okay, but I'm just saying, those two didn't add up to that.
Right.
And I just questioned it, and thank you.
All right, no problem. All right, nothing on their unfinished business. New business, request to hire deputy clerk. I'll let you take that one. Cindy?
Um, we're actually receiving letters of interest and resumes through today, so I apologize, but it was short notice. It's been, I've actually been receiving, received a couple resumes since we announced Laura's retirement, and it was posted internally two weeks ago and in The Voice, online and in the paper. Janet was one of, I believe the only one, that actually had a degree in business administration, lives locally in the community, and I think that she would be a great asset. She turned in her letter of interest. I do know of her, I know of a few people that do also know of her. I think she'd be a great asset to the township.
How do you say her last name?
Garaga.
Garaga.
I apologize, because of the late notice of reading through all the applications, I did ask her if she could be here tonight, and she could not. So I would like to make a motion to hire Janet Garaga as part of our administrative team and as also the deputy clerk.
Support. Did you check out, we have motion and support. Did you check out our references? Okay, and...
He said as the adminis, as part of the administrative team and the deputy clerk.
Correct. I mean, I can appoint anybody as a deputy clerk, but basically for the administrative team.
Are you going to appoint her? Is that what?
Yes, I am. That is my intention, yes.
What, when would she be starting?
Um, as soon as I can get her in here with the elections starting. We're going to have to start doing absentee ballots soon. I had asked her to see if she would be available as early as the 19th, which is a week from Monday.
Okay. And I know it is important, because the deputy clerk plays a huge role into the elections, and we want her to go through this November election to learn. You know, it's just not all done on November 2nd, it's, there's a lot done between now and then, so.
Sneaks up on you rather quickly. I mean, probably that week of the 19th is probably when we will probably get a mass request for absentee ballots, so that's when it all starts.
As far as the other duties, would those be on a probationary status like other people are?
Sure.
That, that section of it?
Yep. Be the same as the other ladies that we have working up there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, what is it, six-month probation?
Six-month, I think, yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any, any other discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
I'm going to vote yes, but I don't like the short notice.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have request to hire building clerk. Cindy Babbage, we also did advertise this internally and externally. And as I sent out an email to everybody, Cindy's pretty much, probably more than three-quarters trained in this position already. I can't imagine finding anybody else that would be more trained. And she's expressed interest in this full-time position. Her pay stays the same as to what she's doing now, it's just a lateral movement. And I'm kind of intending, and Cindy and I talked about it, backfilling Cindy Babish's job with a part-time employee. So in essence, if we hired somebody else, we wouldn't have that option of, of backfilling with a, a part-time person, which would reduce our, our labor costs and healthcare. I'll make a motion that we hire Cindy Babish as our building clerk to replace Patty, who is going to be leaving us, Patty Watson, October 18th.
I'll support that motion.
Yep. Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Treasurer, strategy transfer opportunity.
Yeah, this is, some of our pension investments are with Athene, I think that's how they pronounce that. And every year they want us to make a decision where we want the assets to be invested. And a year ago, the board decided to put it in the guaranteed one-year fund and the one-year point-to-point index, which is where we have it. The only real other opportunity or investment opportunity that is logical is the multi-year index. And so I bring this to the board to see if you want to put any, move this around in any way, move these investments around in any way. Obviously, the multi-year index, because the interest rate is higher, you know, is subject to, subject to maybe not being that high. It's up to the board, it's the board's pleasure where you want it.
Say that again. You said?
The multi-year index is more volatile, so that isn't a guaranteed rate.
Oh, okay.
And the rate of 9% indicates to me, and it should indicate to you that the, you know, the higher the interest rate, the more volatile that market might be. So instead of 9%, you might get 2%, you might get minus 3%. I don't know, okay?
What are we getting now, Tom?
Well, we're getting 2% and 4% on our investments.
And that's guaranteed.
On the split.
The one, the point-to-point isn't guaranteed.
What is on this last one here? You got, is that, you're writing, it says capped at 10% for the multi-year index?
Yeah, you can't make more than 10.
So anyway, I bring this to the board for them to tell me what their pleasure is, what do you?
I think we should put all of the point-to-point.
Well?
I mean, did they give you any recommendations?
Nope, they won't do that.
But we've been pretty secure with that point-to-point, have we not?
Well, it's, it hasn't lost its money that I'm aware of.
Well.
The interest rate has been.
I guess that's the same as security.
Has been pretty constant. Their estimates have held true. So it's the board's pleasure, whatever you want to do.
And Connie Turner's name is on here as the annuitant on all of these because she originated it?
Yeah.
The treasurer?
Probably.
Because this is for the water and the police and?
I'll make a motion, we put 75% of the funds in the one-year point-to-point index and 25% in the guaranteed one-year. 75, 25. Just so your eight are in all in one basket.
I'm not a gambler, so.
Is there a second?
It said 75% in point-to-point?
Yep.
Which is 4%.
Yep.
And 25% remaining in the guaranteed one-year, which is at 2%. I support.
Motion support, any more discussion? We don't have to do a roll call on that, do we? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Got that?
Got it.
Okay.
Did you vote?
No, I didn't. I said nay. Because I didn't like that, I don't.
I didn't hear you say nay, though.
I'm sorry, do you want me to shout it next time?
Well, so I.
You're getting like me.
Okay.
So I can hear it, so I can hear it.
Next we have a request for a storage shed, not to exceed $1,300. I put this on agenda because we have no room for storage of anything at this hall. And things like no-ake signs and other things, we're desperate in need of some storage. My, I went on, lumberjack does not sell, the only kind of sheds they sell is wood. I want a plastic shed for maintenance reasons. I'm not totally sold on this shed yet, but, but I plan on doing a little bit more research and I would like this one or ones very similar to it. And my intentions would be to put it next to our garbage dumpster on the other side of the parking lot. There's a big aver-videy there right now. Take that out and put it right next to the dumpster, there's a light right there.
Camera.
And we probably have to get the DPW to put in a little cement floor, just for a base.
What would you store in it?
Oh, we, we have tons of boxes that don't have to be inside, we have, we.
Oh, so in case water damage, would, wouldn't be anything that would?
Right, right.
In jeopardy of water damage.
Yeah, we, we just need more storage here. And I mean, you, you go back to these back offices, it's crazy.
They're packed, don't they?
So I was going to do a, take out a capital outlay of under $5,000, which I budgeted $7,000 on that line item.
Did you make that motion?
I did.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion? I can't remember the color on this, this is in black and white, but we'll get something that looks.
Please don't get pink or purple.
Come on, John. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next we have Police Department, vehicle purchase. And that's of the new 2017 Ford Interceptor Explorer. The vehicle's going to replace unit 2010, or 210, the 2012 Ford Taurus, which they never, those Tauruses have been not what they said they were going to be, or have they, Mike? But like a motion to, this is a budgeted item, and entertain a motion that we make this purchase.
I'll make a motion that we buy the new police car for $27,708.
Support.
Yes, I'd love to be able to buy this car vehicle for myself for $27,000. They're about a $40,000 vehicle, so. Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we do have the, the, the car that we just voted on, plus the truck that we purchased. And we need to outfit them with equipment. We have $18,000 budgeted for outfitting these two cars. And instead of telling Mike, you know, he's going to have a whole plethora of light bars and this and that go through, is make it a project to, to not to exceed $18,000 for all the equipment and everything that we need to get these cars on the road.
Make a motion, we approve the purchase of equipment for two police vehicles, not to exceed $18,000 from line item 207, 79901.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, just so everyone knows, it includes the lighting, the prisoner partition, partitions.
And participation.
Yeah, and participation. Computer mounts, radar units, graphics, and all the minor equipment and wiring for all the stuff. And we do the, we do the work ourselves, which saves a lot of money. So we just buy the, the equipment and we don't, most, most police, our departments pay somebody else to install it all. I'm guessing it probably saves four or five grand per car for us doing it ourselves. Wouldn't you think that's a fair estimate? So, okay, that being said, $18,000, roll call vote please.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes. All right, moving right along. We did have the unfortunate accident of our one car getting totaled. Like I say, the cost is, you just bought the one for $27,708. They're estimated to fix our, that vehicle is going to be $29,000. We would like to have a motion that we buy this Explorer to replace the one that was just totaled. And we are going to be working with the insurance company because they will also cover all the equipment that was damaged, that won't be able to transfer from, you know, the, the things that we just bought, these two new cars. Some of it will work, some of it won't. We don't know exactly how much we're getting from the insurance company yet, but the vehicle does need to be replaced.
I'll make a motion for the Police Department to purchase another 2017 Ford Interceptor for the price of $27,708 out of line 79901, 207, 79901.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. These things, they, they take a while to get. What are we looking, four or five months? Three months, it depends.
Two to three, probably.
Two to three months. So that's why we want to get it going now, because it, it takes a while before they show up, so. Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that after taking a look at that vehicle and how badly it was damaged, side airbags deployed, a lot of airbags deployed, they are very safe vehicles.
It held up very well.
Yeah.
It did its job.
Yes.
It did. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that the, that the officers are covering and doing better.
Yes, it, the vehicle definitely did its job and we're lucky that day.
It absorbed a huge collision.
A huge impact, yeah. So, roll call vote please.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yep.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next we're requesting approval of, to renew our maintenance agreement with Van Belcom. And it's for the same amount as yours past. This is for our recording system, right?
For 911.
For 911 recording systems. It's $25,48.73. It is budgeted, we have $9,000 budgeted for all our maintenance contracts.
Make a motion, we approve the Van Belcom maintenance agreement for $2,548.73 out of line 207.932.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next we, Fire Department's requesting approval of two shipping containers from IPL Management. They are going to be an add-on to our existing burn container that is used for live burn, search and rescue training. As you recall from the last meeting, we did receive a donation of $5,000 to the Fire Department for, from a citizen that we helped rescue with his whole family that was in a boating accident. And to put towards training, and this is what Daryl wants to do with the $3,500 of We're, we're buying two containers, but is 385 delivery for both containers?
Yes.
Okay, not, not, not per. And what do you, what do you do with these?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with it either.
Explain that to us.
We do live burns in them, well, in the one that we have.
Right.
We're looking to get a little more room out of it, because building rooms in it, we can't be subject to the heat that we're getting from the burn room. So that's why we're looking to expand it. Right now we've got rooms, but we're, the woods catching fire and so on, we got cement board on it and so on, but.
Okay.
Needs to be a little larger.
Are these metal containers?
Yeah, metal shipping containers.
I mean, are we talking about like a 8x40, is that?
Uh, they're, I want to say they're like 9x40.
Uh, they are.
But they're, yes, it's 40 foot wide, one's a 40 and one's a 20.
Okay. I just, I'm curious, you know me.
Off the backside of the current one, we have a roof there with a section of it cut out that holds a pallet. You put the pallet in it, your firefighter goes up on the roof ladder, cuts the pallet out, simulates cutting the roof out and so on, and then the scraps we use in the burn container.
Thank you. All right. Any more discussion? Do we got, do we have motion and support? No.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two shipping containers from IPL Management and the containers to, for donation from Water Rescue, 206, 700, 96000 will be paying for it. Total cost, $35.70.
Plus, you said?
No, that includes the ship.
That included the ship?
All right.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Fire Department, approve EMT training. And it's for Jonathan Falk?
Jonathan Falk.
Bill Huber? Christopher?
Cranky.
Cranky? Logan DuPage? Chandler Cass?
There is one change, Christopher Cranky will not be able to attend, so Sarah Flood.
Oh, okay.
Sarah who?
Flood.
Flood?
Good. Glad she's doing it. Sarah Flood. This is a budgeted item, we have $14,000 budgeted in this line item. Tuition is $950 apiece, so total will be $47.50.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Department EMT training for $4,750, line 206, 960.
Okay, we have motion and support. How many hours is this class? I'm just trying.
266, I believe.
Yeah, 266 hours.
Plus then on top of that, it may say in the brochure there, they've got clinical hours also.
Right. So it's a, it's a program, that's for sure. It's 266 hours. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Daryl. All right, DPW, we have our maintenance for our Ainsworth Booster Station. I brought it up to the board's attention, we had Dixon Engineering take a look at it, and they're recommending some paint and. and they're recommending some painting and changing some of the piping this pitted, and also cathodic protection system. They said we can, nothing has to happen right away, they wanted, they recommended we do this in the next two years. John talked to them and asked them, what should they do first, the cathodic protection system or the painting? And they definitely said the cathodic protection system. So what we're asking is, we go ahead with doing the cathodic protection system for twenty thousand dollars, and we're gonna charge fifty percent of the engineering to this, the stage of the work, and also overflow flap gate on a discharge pipe for two thousand. And then, our plan is that we do this work this year, budget year, and then July of next year, in our next budget, we do the exterior overcoating, the piping on that tank.
John, when will they start this?
This fall. This fall, we'll do the rest as soon as.
I think that's this time, isn't it, right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, this?
Yeah.
We're in the fall.
Probably October.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll do it next month or two.
That's my, just asking.
Yeah. No, good questions. And, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, how long does this maintenance last? When do we have to redo it?
Oh, this was originally done in ninety-seven, so.
Twenty years. How old's that tank?
Late seventies, I believe.
Yeah. Okay. And it's never had the cathodic protection?
That's correct.
Can you explain that?
Well, it's just a big handle.
It's what?
It's an handle that absorbs the.
Electrolysis.
Electrolysis.
Yeah, it's like a zinc plate on a boat or a barge.
I understand, but.
Okay. Right, that's what I'm saying, right. And so, it takes the zinc away and leaves good metal.
Okay.
Saves the tank many more years. We'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead with this project. You want me to, twenty thousand, six thousand, and two thousand for this budget year, sixteen seventeen? Is that fine enough, or you want me to?
No, that works.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Are you gonna bring the second stage back again, or you want it done all at one time?
Uh, we could do it, we can do it all at one time if you want.
It's up to you.
Yeah, let's do it all at one time.
What, for next budget year too?
Yeah. Because, well, we're gonna get, no.
No, we shouldn't do that, Artie.
Well, we're gonna get bids, so, right.
Absolutely.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna get bids on this.
But this comes out of our maintenance fund.
Right.
Not our budget.
Yep. So we're gonna be getting bids on this, and so it will come back before us again, because we'll have to accept the bid.
Right.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion to accept the, start the bidding process of the project for the cathodic protection system, engineering, and the overflow flap gate on discharge, on the discharge.
Fifty percent of the engineering.
Right.
Yep.
All right, any more discussion? Everyone in favor of this, signify by saying aye. Oh, no, roll call vote. Caught myself.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving right along, in our budget process, we were talking about, we have forty-some of these old fire hydrants, Traverse City hydrants, and they are obsolete, to say it best, and causing problems, and they're real low, isn't that the problem too, Daryl? They're low to the ground and, some are, and it just takes too long to get the hoses connected to them. And we're talking to, oh, what's the name of the company?
East Jordan.
Yeah, East Jordan. And they actually developed a kit to, actually, we can put on there and turn them into an East Jordan hydrant, saves us some money and a lot easier than replacing the whole hydrant. It's twenty, or two thousand forty per hydrant. We're looking at do ten of them this year, this budget year, and hopefully we'll do ten per year until we get them all replaced. So we're looking for a motion, total cost for this year would be twenty thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, thirty cents, and come out of line item five nine one nine seven zero, which it is budgeted for.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of ten conversion hydrants from East Jordan Iron Works to the total cost of twenty thousand four hundred dollars and thirty cents from line item five nine one nine seventy.
Support.
All right, we have motion and support. Any discussion? When would we get these, John, is there much of a wait, waiting time, or?
Thirty days.
Thirty days? Okay. All right, roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Okay. Motion passes. Next, we have a resolution, twenty sixteen thirty-three requests for, I sign, I have the authority to sign application to receive local county road fund, match funds for our project. As you can see, I filled it out. We're looking at doing the Colony Isle subdivision. I brought it to the board's attention in my report last meeting about two projects we had on the radar. This is one, it's a little bit more money, but affects, you know, a lot more people. And the total cost of this construction is gonna be a hundred and thirty-five thousand. I'm requesting, hopefully we'll get this grant for fifty thousand, so the township, the cost of the township will be eighty-five thousand dollars. And again, we're gonna be putting this out for bid here in about a month, two months, so we get a better deal versus waiting and putting it out for bid in the middle of the summer when everybody else is all busy. In the back, I showed you the roads that we're gonna do, and it comes to about one and a half miles of road that we're resurfacing. Eighty-five grand is a pretty good deal to resurface on one and a half miles of road.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-three request for local county road match funds.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
It's a resolution, we don't have to roll call.
Oh, you're right, let's go back, we gotta do roll call.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. I was thinking it wasn't a contract, because I'm actually signing the contract, but, okay, whatever. Resolution.
Just a quick question here. What, where's the rest of this, this sentence?
Um, it's the same certification that's on every resolution, just for a paper saving process.
Okay. Okay.
Resolu, resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-four, payment as add-on to the waterline district fee. This involves when there's a lot split, it's hard for me to explain. When there's a lot split, the new lot that's formed?
In lieu of.
In lieu of, is charged a fee for bringing the water out, basically.
Parcels that weren't in the original.
Yes. Do you wanna explain it, John, better than I can? When there's a lot split, this is a in lieu of fee for bringing water out there, right?
Well, it's a special assessment fee.
Yeah, or for the, I'm sorry, for the special assessment fees.
It's the front footage fee that we're charged every parcel.
Right. So, so if there's lot split, the special assessment fee doesn't stay with the old lot, that share goes to the new lot.
It's assigned to the new lot.
Yes.
They have to pay their fair share, period.
Right. And we need a resolution to do that. That's what this is.
Make a motion, we adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty-four, payment as add-on to waterline district fee.
Is it thirty-four or thirty-three?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Seeing how I so eloquently described it. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, this is the add-on. As you recall, we're going to, with the new Drug Task Force Millage that was passed, they, part of that is, they are going to be using one of our full-time officers on the Drug Task Force, which is gonna be a good thing for us, it's gonna foster better communications and serve our needs better down here for, and hopefully get more bang for our buck off of the Drug Task Force, the St. Clair County Drug Task Force. That being said, we're gonna lose one of our full-time officers January. We just found that out today. And to the Drug Task Force, and we're looking for, to backfill and replace him. We have a part-time officer, Officer Shane, that we'd, Chief Coach would like to elevate to full-time status. You wanna get up and, and talk about why you wanna pick him and?
Well, he's come on as a part-time officer with us, he has recently finished a field training officer program, he actually accelerated through that quite well. He has pretty much shown himself to be a pretty, pretty good officer, very well-rounded, very good with all the equipment that we use and with the modern technology that we use right now. It's kinda nice, we've got someone that kinda clicks right in there, especially with new computers and our records management and CAD systems and that. He's had no problems whatsoever, he works very well out there in the community, very good disposition. He currently works as a sergeant up in Lexington. Small community, as we know, he's looking for something that's got a little bit more of a future for him. I think he's gonna make a good asset to our department. Along with that is, as we know right now, we've got an officer who's out on disability right now, as well as our other officer from the accident, hopefully he won't be out too long, but it's kinda hurting us right now as far as manpower-wise. And I think with this, it's gonna help get him up to par, so that when we do lose the other officer going into the task force, it's gonna be an easy and smooth transition and should be pretty much seamless at that point.
So you're gonna bring him up right away?
Correct.
Yeah, we're two, two, two full-time officers short for disability reasons.
I'll make that motion to bring Officer Shane up to full-time position.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have public comments. Any public comments? Anyone like to make public comments? Come on up, state your name and address.
I'm Kelly Nader, seven two oh three Audubon. I am running as an independent for Clay Township Supervisor in the November ballot. I was looking over the audit, and we've had a lot of problems with M-Tera service lately in the recycling, and I was, we have a contract, we have a budget, and I noticed that we have, we're forty-two thousand over the budget on the M-Tera, according to the two thousand fifteen audit. I was just wondering if you know why or how would that happen?
Two thousand fifteen?
I would have to look, but we did, we, we actually, we restructured the way that our garbage contract works. We pulled out, before M-Tera charged us one flat fee, and that included the tipping fees with the county. We pulled out the tipping fee, so now they just give us a charge for basically a taxi cab service to the, to the county dump, and we pay the tipping fees directly.
So, besides the contract?
That saved us about thirty thousand dollars going forward, plus we started recycling, and that also saved us quite a bit of money. And actually, right now, our garbage budget is way, we have a huge surplus in it right now.
Well, I just wondered how, if you have a budget and you have a contract, how you could be forty-two thousand over.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they increased fuel surcharges.
Yeah, it was, it was increased fuel service charges.
And that is in the contract that they are able to do that.
Right.
Okay, well, that's pretty high. Also, on the same page of the audit, Frag Midies, it says, we have a budgeted amount for Frag Midies, but in the two thousand fifteen audit, I noticed that we're about three hundred and forty-two percent over the approved budget.
Yeah, but that's a rev, it's hard to budget, because we don't know how many people sign up for it, and actually, the more people sign up for it, it's, we collect revenues for it, and then, then we buy the chemicals and disperse them for it. And actually, the more people signs up for it, it's revenue positive for the township. So, yeah, it's over budgeted, but it was also over, revenues were over budgeted too.
Wouldn't that show up in the audit?
It should, but I don't know, I, you know, why don't you come in, I'll go over the numbers with you.
Okay, yeah, I actually had a lot of questions on the audit. Is it two fifty, I have the page here, if you wanna see it, but it was just, it just seemed like if you have a budget and a contract, I thought you'd stay in it, is what my question was. But, okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other public comments?
My name is Diane Miller, seven three one one B Lane, and I'm here to express my dismay in how the township is approaching ordinance enforcement, people who are violating our township ordinances. I have, I've been, I was in violation, I received a letter. I didn't know I was in violation, but I was. And I was, through communications with Mr. Prot, I was told that I have been singled out in my neighborhood as the only one to receive an ordinance violation, and that he had received these instructions from the board to take one person at a time and violate them, and then the rest of the neighborhood would find out about it, and then we would all comply. This is what I was told. I am very unhappy. In my case, it was a storage violation, my camper was ten feet too close to the road for the setback requirements for Pearl Beach Isles, where my home is in B Lane. So, I, in discussions with Mr. Prot, I asked him why I was being singled out. It wasn't explained to me, I was told that if I didn't like it, to come to the board meeting. I think that there are, in my, on my street alone, there are approximately fifty houses, and after reading the two hundred and sixty-five pages of ordinances, concentrating on residential ordinances, of course, there are probably twenty-five of the fifty houses that are currently in violation, about fifty percent of the houses on my road. Now, I don't know what his intentions are, whether he wants to start a neighborhood war where I got violated, so now I'm gonna complain about everybody else, and then, you know, everybody's gonna be mad at everybody over this, and I'm not here to ask that. And I understand that the township has. And I understand that the township has ordinances, we need these ordinances, and they need to be handled, handled fairly to everyone. And I was given a 30-day notice, 30 days, move that trailer, or you'll be fined. 30 days is a short notice. There is a, there is another trailer down the street from me that's been there for 20 years, in, in violation. So I had no idea that when I parked my trailer in a similar way 10 years ago, that I was violating any ordinance, but I was, and I have fixed it. It took me more than 30 days to do it, though. I, I feel that if we want to enforce these ordinances and to be fair to everyone, that a letter should be sent out to all of the residents, and all residents be given a proper amount of time. 30 days is short to make compliance with ordinances that have been virtually ignored or overlooked for 20 years, in, in my opinion. People, people are facing, you know, a lot of life challenges right now. Some people are having health issues, some people, some people, like our Algenack school teachers, have had to take a pay cut. They may not be able to afford to move their, their items that they have stored on their property to a storage facility. Some people have limitations in, in what they can accomplish in a 30-day period. As I told Mr. Prot, I will be having a new knee, joint replacement surgery, on September 20th. So he gave me some extra time. Well, it's taken me almost 75 days, and that has been painful. Every day that I work on getting things moved around and readjusted to comply with the ordinances has been difficult for me. And I'm here to ask that you send a letter out to everyone in the township and let them know that you've hired a code enforcement officer, and that we need to clean these codes, clean these areas up, but make it be fair to all, not just single one person out and expect them to call and make complaints on all their neighbors and, and start some type of a neighborhood war. It's just wrong. People need a lot more time to react to something that has been overlooked for so many years.
So did he give you more time? I, I don't know what's going on.
Yes, he did. He said that he, but then he came by my house and, and sat in the middle of the street in my driveway when I was standing at my kitchen sink, getting a drink of water during these hot, humid days. And he sat there, and he looked, and he decided, based on his visual, that I had done nothing. When, in fact, at the time when he parked in my driveway, or on the road in front of my driveway, there was a table set up in the, in the driveway where I was removing items out of the basement compartments of my trailer. There was an air compressor sitting next to the tires. I had already removed several items that I had stored underneath of the trailer, I had removed items from the interior of the trailer, which, of course, he wasn't able to see. And he sent me a second letter telling me that it appeared that I had made no effort towards complying with our agreement, and I had 30 days and he'd be back, and I would face a fine and face appearance in district court.
I'm going to check into it, I'm going to give you a call in a couple of days, okay, Diane?
Like, like I said, I, you know.
I'm sure I haven't.
I, I don't know why I was singled out, but as I looked down the street, no one else is making any efforts to comply with ordinances, I asked why I was being singled out.
I'm hoping you're not singled out, but, okay, I'll, I'll check into it.
I was told that that was the direction of the board, was to take one, one house at a time in each neighborhood.
Never. No. I'll check into it, I'll give you a call.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Diane. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Diane DeBoyer, 9938 River Drive, or River Road, I guess, Clay. Just wanted a few things for the citizens that are coming up now, and, Mr. Supervisor, if I could, I'd like to ask, address the clerk on the upcoming absentee ballot issue. Do the candidates, are they able to come in here and purchase the absentee ballot list from you?
Yep.
And is there a set price for that?
It'd be just a FOIA request.
It would be a FOIA request, and, and it's by the page?
I haven't had anyone request one yet, so I don't have a price set for you. Actually, Ms. Nader called earlier today, and I told her that I would get with her, I'd send her an email and let her know if I could run a report, approximately how many pages it would be. I have not had the opportunity to do that this afternoon.
Okay, because other people, too, are also wanting to know, you know, I, it's my understanding you can go to the county clerks as well, is that correct?
St. Clair County Clerk, for day-to-day, yep. I believe, unless they've changed it, as of last election, you could do them every day. You'd request it that day for the day, and they would send, email you the results.
To catch up with other things, okay, but when would, when?
The St. Clair County Clerk doesn't charge for theirs, because you can do it all electronically through their website.
You can print it off of their website?
You do the request through the website, and then they email you back the results for the day.
Okay, that's excellent. No, thank you. A lot of people, everything's changing, so, okay.
I understood, she said it wasn't ready yet. It's not ready yet. They may not even do that decision.
Oh, okay. When approximately, how early in advance do the absentee ballots go out, before the election?
As soon as we get them. The county clerk typically orders them. We are supposed to have them mailed for the overseas voters by the 24th of September. If we don't have them here physically, then we have to do an electronic ballot to them.
So if we called the township, you'll, as we get closer in September, you'll have an exact date?
Typically, they show up here the day before, we have to mail them out, has been what I've seen the last three or four elections here.
So we have to hound you and call?
Usually it'd be the 23rd or the 24th, they'll show up, because that's when they're supposed to mail.
But it could be before?
Could be, yep. And as soon as we receive them, anybody that has requested one, they get mailed out that day.
Okay, so request it right now and leave that with you for when it's ready?
Yep.
Okay. Your election workers, is that something that's advertised? Do you do training for election workers that are interested in?
They do training at the county.
Just the county does? Okay. And how do you choose the election workers for Clay?
We had requested, it was on our website, we had put it out during board meetings, anybody that is interested certainly can put an application in.
So it's still up there to?
Yep.
Okay, but online? Really?
No, they had it advertised online. You could pick up the application from here for, actually, through the state of Michigan. Standard, no matter which precinct you want to work in, the training is standard, you can get certified with J. DeBoyer at the county.
I know he teaches the classes, I just didn't know if, what your process was to hear.
Yep, and then you can be, you can be, once you're certified, you're certified for two years, you can work Algenack, you can work Clay, you can work up north, you can work anywhere.
Okay, thank you. And then one other thing, and it's, Supervisor, I would address you with this, we're all getting confused. We're wondering how many hats Cindy Babish wears, what is her title we're reading, Deputy Building Department, DRC, Plan Commission?
She's going to be the building, the office staff in the building department, she's going to be replacing, she's going to be replacing Patty Watson's position. Plus, she's Parks and Rec Coordinator.
Plus Parks and Rec, is she your deputy?
No.
Does she get stipends?
She's got, she's getting a $3,500, is it 32 or 35?
32.
$3,200 stipend for doing Parks and Rec activities.
On top of a salary?
Yep.
What is her salary?
What's?
I don't.
Nobody knows.
It's an hourly rate, based on the union contract.
Okay. Well, you talked about checking backgrounds and everything. I sat on the board, the DRC board, for a long time, and I just wondered if you might want to start following the same advice this board in checking. Well, she was just, she was, her contract was not up, she was not, she was dismissed from being that chair equally by the school, Algenack and Clay. I found it odd that no one checked into that or why what that was taking place.
Well, I think this board has a lot of confidence in her doing the job, she has a lot of experience.
Okay, well, I guess it's always good to, that people you bring, especially when you're, you know, giving multiple jobs to the same person, because nobody can quite figure out the DRC thing. And your budget includes funding for her, for DRC, and you mentioned that you have...
Downriver Rec, I don't know.
Well, you call it Downriver Rec, Department of Recreation, whatever, I don't, well, whatever it is called, it's new to all of us until we read it in the paper, we didn't realize it existed, but you mentioned about using the school or Algenack or any place, the, the actual programs will be held where, in the school?
Well, we're going to use our own resources first, and the, the school offered, and so did Brown's Field and some other places offered that we could use their resources also if we needed to.
But you're not in any agreement with the school for that?
No.
Because Algenack, I just was at Algenack's board meeting, and they wanted to know why they were not included or asked to be included, and...
Included in what?
In, in whatever you call your recreation.
Okay, we're doing rec programs.
Well, you know, they wanted, they had contacted Dr. Stryker, and he said he had no agreement to work with Clay at all. So, that's what the people of Clay wanted to know, where you were going to be doing your programs, but in the school.
Some.
Because Algenack doesn't intend on having us there, and that was stated tonight, that's why I ask, point blank.
I'm confused, I...
Yeah, me too.
I don't know.
Well, the people don't, are confused, that's why I'm asking. The people are confused what's going on.
You're telling me Algenack's not going to have any programs in the schools? Is that what you said?
No, that's not what I said.
Oh, that's what I thought you said.
They asked why they weren't included, they asked Stryker if, if there was an agreement between Clay and the school, and he said no. And so you mentioned tonight that they would be in the school or our or wherever, and Algenack, and Algenack does not plan on that. Are you planning on using, are you planning on moving that into, still into the part of Algenack L. eventually?
Algenack L.
We have a Parks and Rec program for Clay Township, for Clay Township residents, we have an informal agreement with the schools that we can utilize their, their tennis courts or their gyms, if they're open. They have told us that we are certainly welcome to use them.
But nothing with Algenack or any of their buildings over there?
Well, no, Algenack has their own programs for Parks and Rec.
They dropped out of our program.
They dropped out.
This is just Clay Township Parks and Recreation.
Well, I know, that's why everybody's asking, because we saw one article, and you know what it was, Desalge, you're right, I was there. The school wanted out, and Algenack wanted out, too, and that's how, I, I was there, I remember what happened, I find, everybody does not understand, and it came up about, at one time, that possibly that was going to be put next to the church, whatever is going into the...
That sounds like conversation.
We never, we never mentioned anything about having any programs in the new church with our Parks and Rec.
Well, people, yeah, okay, then that was put in the paper and air then, too.
Probably on Facebook, too.
That didn't come from me, I'm just asking you.
I don't think it was in the paper.
I don't think so either.
We were sitting on the... Don't believe anything you hear in half of what you see.
Yeah, I'm new to the biz, I didn't know. Okay, thanks. Is your contingency fund $2,200, or is that also a bogus error out there?
What contingency?
For your budget for Clay Township, I, I, you are the supervisor, that's what.
What, what?
What is your contingency fund for this year, for your budget?
I do, which budget? We do 15 funds, what fund?
The entire Clay Township budget that's done every year has a contingency fund. I just ask what it is.
Each fund usually has a contingency fund, and that's usually funds that aren't going to a specific thing and will end up going back into fund balance.
Is there anybody in Clay Township that doesn't receive stipends?
Several.
And any employees? But every, who are the several that don't got it? Would that be easier? I don't mean to upset you, that shouldn't be something to upset you to answer to us, because, are you going to, like, be accountable for it?
Let's, hang on, this is public comments, but I will field your questions.
I would like, we would like to know.
Most employees do not get stipends for Clay Township.
Those that do will make it accountable every month, will, with people that, who pay the taxes?
Yes, they're accountable to this board.
You will have a list of what they are?
They're accountable to this board.
Okay. And because people don't know how much they are, what you do, what it includes, who's doing it, it is their money, and they're entitled to know that.
Exactly.
They want to know, and the only way we can know is to come here and ask you that.
Okay. Just like you're entitled to know what Officer Stockwell's done for the past month, do we have to tell you what he's done the past month for his salaries?
No, I'm asking you specifically what you do for your stipends. Now, you, do you get paid when you go on a field trip with Stryker, with the kindergarteners to your personal home as a stipend?
No, I do not.
Because there's pictures out there of that, and I don't really understand that we voted you in to do that.
I have a document with all my non-statutory duties, it's like a three-page document.
Well, I know you want to vote it in for that.
And I think I gave it to Ms. Nader, right? And I can give it to you also.
Okay, because if you're accountable for your stipends, I, I just know that you, that is not a part of your duties, and I found that very odd when you should be being the supervisor, not at school playing.
If you want a list of my non-statutory duties, send me an email, I will give them to you.
I don't, I know what your statutory duties are.
My non-statutory duties.
That's what I'm concerned with, you came up with the stipend thing, not the people, Clay.
It's a, it's a way of having myself more accountable to this board.
But you're being paid?
Well, we all are being paid.
Yes, you have a salary.
It's a way, the stipends are a way, so I could, I am more accountable to the board.
It was my understanding at the last time that budgets were cut for the three, the dropped. Mr. Fetter, was that you that made that motion?
Yes.
What were they dropped to, 28 and 30?
40 for the supervisor, for the clerk, and 28 for the treasurer.
And that's what the, what everybody's paid this year? That's what, because it's my understanding, it's 100 and some thousand.
Where do you get these sneakers? Excuse me, right now, they're still receiving their salaries at the last...
Oh, that's so rude, I'm asking a question, and I'm trying to hear the answer. Yes, I'm sorry.
I said, actually, right now, they're still, they're still receiving, receiving the same amount of pay, because you cannot legally lower their, their salary until the end of the term.
They're receiving the same amount of pay as what was last year, the set in the budget?
Yes.
Not really. You know, the, the clerk and the supervisor had a salary increase as of when was it?
I apologize.
As of July 1.
There was. Yep.
Mine stayed the same.
Yours stayed the same? What do you make, Tom, can I ask? Because, you know what, if I'm receiving improper information, so is the whole community, so you're transparent.
If you want to come in, we'll give you the whole rate structure.
No, I don't want to come in, I want to know, right? I'm not going to come in, I'm asking publicly.
Hurt me, I'm just curious, but I mean, if you're saying you're receiving improper information...
When I spoke to you personally, you said you drive to them, to that.
Excuse me, would it be hearsay, or would, wouldn't you rather have come to the township to request the information?
Right now, I'm asking you what every, what your pay is.
Come on in, and I will lay it out for you on a spreadsheet, what everyone makes, the elected officials make. I can't get any clearer than that.
You can't tell us at this meeting what you make?
It, it's, it's a little too confusing.
It's too confusing to tell us what you make?
I...
And nobody else on the board is going to tell the citizens what you make. It's not 30,000, obviously.
No, it's not.
Okay, is it over 100,000?
Anyone can come into the offices and discuss that with us, but this is public comments.
Why do we have to come into the office to ask who my elected officials make?
Right now, I mean, Artie, if you're, what was your salary in, in last year's budget?
It was 54,000.
Right, and then you had an increase of?
Right now, I'm, I'm adjusted, I'm making 62,000 dollars a year.
Right, with your stipend?
With the stipend.
Correct.
That's what it is.
With the stipend?
Now, right, including the stipend, I make 62,000. If you want to come in, I will lay it out month to month, what I make.
I think the, the whole community wants to know that, and I, I think... I think the, the whole community wants to know that and I, I think that should not be something wrong to ask at a meeting.
It's not.
Well, I'm not getting an answer.
You just got an answer.
It's sixty-two thousand, but.
Well, how can you know what your stipends are ahead of time?
I'm not sure how much is the stipend, how much is my, my statutory duties off the top of my head. The total is sixty-two thousand.
It can't go over that.
It can't go over sixty-two thousand?
Right, right. This board can, has the option of pulling the stipend away if so chooses, if they feel I'm not doing my job. If it was just a salary that any elected official would have, this board cannot adjust the salary of an elected official, so they would be stuck paying me sixty-two thousand.
They can adjust it up but not down.
You can adjust it up but not down. So if they didn't like the job I was doing without the stipend, they could not lower my salary. With the stipend in place, this board can lower my salary.
I'm, well, well, I know how it works.
So it, it holds me more accountable.
I'm asking you what it is in the budget plan. You had to put a number in the budget, that's what I asked.
Right.
And I wasn't just targeting you, I was wondering what.
Right, as, as far as.
The stipend thing only lasts as long as this board is in, is that correct? That changes after this year when the new, after the election?
It could, this one is service.
It could, it would have to be approved by the next board.
Yeah, this board can, can adjust the stipends down anytime.
And for instance, tonight, when, like, I know that it's Mrs. Valentine's, she picks her deputy, usually the board then approves it and the, and the salary that is suggested? Did you suggest a salary and I missed it?
No, she is hired through a union contract, so she gets paid whatever the union contract stipulates. As far as her deputy stipend, for being my deputy, that was set by the board in July as well when we did the budget. It's not set to a person, it's set to the department for the park.
Okay, so she, so whatever's in the budget is what she makes plus stipends and everybody's gonna make their stipends available for the public to know what they do with their time and make their money with, is that correct? Everyone?
They were all presented when we approved the budget in June. There was a resolution for each one of them.
You know, I had moved away and I'm back and everybody I'm talking to doesn't have that answer, so I felt that I would like to hear it from all of you firsthand in front of it because.
I find it strange though that.
You should never find us, an elected official, it's strange.
No, I've, I've sat here for twenty years.
I have not.
And you're the first one that's coming and asking that, so I just found it a little strange.
Good.
And I, I mean, I have a telephone number that they can call me twenty-four seven.
That's, that's fine, but this is a public meeting and.
I understand that Diane.
And we are entitled to ask that and, and I thank you for the information that you gave me, although I find it really offensive to be talked to for asking how much you make.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See none. Board member comments?
Well, um, last week, maybe ten days ago, I was coming from the city and I decided to stop at the, um, pier and take a look at our fishing pier. And I was quite pleased with what I saw, it's in real good shape, the ladders are good. Um, two of our fireboats are moored there and they can be used for a quick response to a water situation if necessary. There's nice signage, there's, um, nice handicap parking, um, people can go out and fish, they could even take a swim if they wanted to. I think it's an asset to the community. But when I was walking back, I had parked my vehicle on our back property there and I noticed that the North Channel Marina has probably twenty or twenty-five fifty-foot spiles laying there, steel spiles, and has some vehicles parked there that he uses for his marine equipment, marine work. And, uh, I believe it's encroaching on township property and I don't feel that he should have the privilege of using township property when no other citizens have that kind of a, uh, availability to them. And I don't know exactly where the property lines are, so Artie, I'm, I'm, understand that you've been working on this and maybe you could comment a little more.
Yeah, I, I met with the owner that, that has it, Darren Gabriel, and he's going to, I requested him to remove the stuff that he has on township property. And then I, I backed it up with a letter, I, I'm giving him till September twenty-six to remove the property and I told him if it's still there, it's gonna be considered that he's trespassing on our property and will be held or dealt with accordingly. The DDA bought that property and they want to replace a fence and do some other things there and so he needs to remove the, uh, his items and he, he's well aware of that.
So that we know exactly where our property lines is.
Yeah, September twenty-six, I believe, it's the last Monday of the, of the month I gave him to.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? John, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, I noticed that you have put a few dangerous buildings.
Yep.
Are we gonna be privileged to which ones they are?
Sure, well, we voted on them.
I understand that, but is that McLean's one of them?
Yep.
I've gotten, I got two calls over the weekend about that.
He, he had a, uh, it was a dangerous building, the old barn, and he, he filed an injunction in the, in the courts to, uh, to stop us from tearing it down, claiming that it's not dangerous. Um, I believe, I, I can't say for sure, uh, our council says probably going to be dismissed and we'll have the right to go and tear it down. Um, if that, if the judge actually dismissed it yet or not, I am, I, I don't know, but that's what I'm anticipating happening real soon. So until our legal counsel gives us the go-ahead, we're gonna wait till they, we, we get all our ducks in a row legally.
Okay, and then I'd just like to comment on that, the lady that, from B Lane there. I found that if Jim said that, I mean, I'd like you to say something to him.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna find out.
This board is never directed, to my knowledge, now I did say one time, if we maybe kicked a few butts, there wouldn't be so many butts to kick, but I didn't say whose butt to kick.
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah.
So I, I, I find that, uh, I'd like you to just stick your nose in that, please.
Yeah, I'm going to. Thank you, Cindy?
Nothing.
No? Are you Karen? No, Tom?
No, I don't have anything else to say.
No. You, Tom?
Nothing here.
No? I, I, you know, I, I don't know why it's so complicated, um, as far as our pay structure. Right now, I make sixty-two thousand dollars a year. Part of that is, is set up as a stipend and part of that is set up as statutory duties. Right now, because I'm in the current, this current year, my, I get paid more for my statutory duties and less of a stipend. I don't know what my stipend is right now. Come November twentieth, my statutory duties salary will be forty thousand and then the balance per year and the balance will be my stipend. As far as exact numbers, what they are right now, I don't know, but the bottom line is I get paid sixty-two thousand dollars a year. If this board thinks that, uh, I'm not doing my duties, my non-statutory duties, they have the right to cut my salary. Um, after November twentieth, they can cut my salary twenty-two thousand dollars a year and, or whoever is the supervisor, they could cut it twenty-two thousand dollars a year. It makes the elected officials more accountable to the board. It's something new. Uh, I think the Port Huron Times Herald in one of their opinions, they applauded us for doing that and so did the MTA. I know it's kinda confusing because we're in transition right now and, uh, but it, it is a good system, I believe, going forward and it makes myself, Tom and Cindy more accountable to this board. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Just let it be known that I don't think any of the board members get a stipend. We, we can't even get ferry fee.
Is it Jane Doe average percent of the, I don't even have a clue what a stipend is.
Right.
So if this was done to let all of us know, I still don't, I don't know what a stipend is.
Okay.
Most of us don't understand what you're talking about.